Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council held May 3, 2016. We'll start with a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda. It was moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Barker that Council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of May 3, 2016 with the removal of Team Northern Throttle and the deferral of Bylaw 16-038, a bylaw to adopt optional tools for tax capping. All in favor? Thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? None declared. Petitions and delegations, we have none. We have the acceptance of the minutes and recommendations. It was moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Morgan that Council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The Kirkland Lake Public Library Board held March 17, 2016. The regular meeting of Council held April 26, 2016. And the meeting of Finance held April 26, 2016. All in favor? Thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Counselor Kylie, Chair of the Finance Committee. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the 2016 Budget Presentation. At this regular meeting of Council, we will pass a bylaw to accept our operating and capital budgets and set the tax rates for the year 2016. First of all, I would like to thank our CEO, department managers, treasurer, and directors for their efforts in delivering our 2016 budget. In this being my second year as Budget Chair, I felt it would be of benefit to continue to have an additional experienced counselor assist me in the process by providing input and additional oversight while each director presented their respective budgets. I thank Counselor Tom Barker for his insight and feedback as we received each departmental budget in detail, line by line. Every year is a greater challenge for our staff to face inflationary pressures with many fixed costs escalating every year while trying to still maintain the high level of services expected by our taxpayers. This has been a particularly difficult budget as we find our nondiscretionary costs, example, hydro heating, insurance, and benefit costs increasing, leaving us little wiggle room in the budget to find savings. Having said this, I believe that we've met this goal and I am pleased to present this budget. It is important to remember that when you live in a mining community, most of the mining taxes go directly to the province. This means taxpayers of Kirkland Lake, particularly the residential sector, who comprise 79% of the assessment, pay the main tax burden. It is also important to understand that the town sets the tax rate and it gets multiplied by the assessment of your property that MPAQ sets to come up with your tax bill. As our property values have increased over the past four years, this will result in an increase in taxes for some who were under assessed previously. Some will remain the same and some will actually decrease. It is also important to note that Kirkland Lake is one of the few communities in Ontario that include sewer costs on the tax bill. In an effort to make property taxes comparable to other municipalities, we will be removing the sewage costs from the tax bill effective January 2017. At the outset of the 2016 Budget Planning Session, this council has been committed to using any increase in revenues from reassessment to hold the line on tax rates wherever possible for the taxpayers of Kirkland Lake. I am pleased to announce that the residential tax rate will not increase this year. The actual tax rate will decrease by 1.76%. Cumulatively, this has resulted in a total tax decrease in the residential tax rate over the last six years of 28%. Multi-residential will see an increase this year of 6.617% in the tax rate, which is still far below the provincial average. In a continuing effort to decrease our commercial tax rates, the commercial sector will see a 5% tax rate decrease. The industrial sector will also see a 1.04% tax rate decrease this year. While we continue to monitor our spending in 2015, we incurred a total deficit of $310,724, of which $187,480 can be attributed to over-budget hydro costs incurred by running all equipment at the wastewater treatment plant during the warranty period. We will not incur that cost again this year. In actual day-to-day operational costs, excluding the above, the net operating deficit was $24,500, which is marginal considering the size of the town's budget and speaks well for the efforts of the Town of Kirkland Lake employees. On the advice of our auditor and the Finance Committee, we have also added $100,000 to last year's budget to reflect the uncollectible taxes. This amount will be drawn down from working capital. Working capital now sits at $630,816. As the 2015 deficit comes directly out of our working capital, we have built in a component in this year's budget to increase our working capital position by $310,000. Our transfer payment from the provincial government remains the same as last year with no increase. Our total net general operating fund for 2015 was $16,210,617. We expect to spend $16,718,211 in 2016. This equates to an increase of $507,594, more than we spent last year. Our capital budget for 2016 is $13,877,888, which includes this year's portion of the aquatic center project, which is still underway. Some of the projects that we will be undertaking this year are turnout gear, aerial truck, and communication upgrade for fire services, fitness equipment replacement for the complex, bed entrapment devices, window replacements, and server upgrade for Tech Pioneer residents, airport crack filling, the purchase of one half-ton and one van to upgrade the fleet. These would be used vehicles, but in the newer models. Museum heating system is still in progress, computer servers and telephone system replacements, Wood Street and Comfort Avenue reconstruction continuing up to Taylor Avenue, road work year two and paving four-year plan, including Government Road West, Oaks to the end of Ford Lane, Government Road East, Burnside to Silver Knight, Airport Road, and several others. Civic service stadium renewal, solar panel installation, Archer Drive. The list is just a few of the highlights. In previous budget speeches, we have talked about our issue with uncollectible taxes and the problem it creates for all taxpayers. Although our Treasury Division is working hard on this problem, this is still ongoing. We appreciate the efforts that most taxpayers are making. On the economic development front, we are pleased about the opening of the Heritage North site. Big capital projects such as the four-year paving plan, civil stadium upgrades, and aquatic center will begin bringing in a multitude of contractors and tradespeople to our town. We also see new housing developments on King George Court, where several building lots have been sold and construction is set to start this year. The Dudley Hewitt Cup Championship, being hosted by the Kirkland Lake Gold Miners Club, is underway this week, which will add to an influx of visitors and tourist dollars into the local economy and the opportunity to showcase the town and the hospitality of the residents of Kirkland Lake. Heritage North Convention Center has been completely renovated to accommodate conventions, meetings, weddings, and other special occasion events. This has been made possible through government funding with minimal cash outlay from the Town of Kirkland Lake. A marketing plan is in progress in partnership with our local hotels. Response to date has been well received, with the facilities fully booked for all weekends this summer, as well as some fall bookings, and future conventions already looking booked for 2016 and 17. Our primary goal remains to operate this center at a break-even point within the next two-year period. In addition, we have renewed enthusiasm in forming of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, which will be beneficial in putting a strategic economic plan in place that will attract new businesses and industry, as well as expansion of existing commercial industrial sectors. The Economic Development Strategic Plan has identified a number of opportunities and a clear roadmap on how to work towards achieving our goals and objectives of increasing economic development to the Town of Kirkland Lake. The Economic Development Advisory Committee is in the startup stage, made up of local citizens, business professionals, labor, industrial, and mining sector representatives, to name a few. We also recognize that small business is the backbone of our economy. Therefore, there will be a strong focus towards small to mid-sized business that will create additional jobs in our community. We encourage interested parties to become involved in the process by submitting their name for consideration to join the Economic Development Advisory Committee. KPMG has performed an operational review on our town's structure and services. Their final report will be presented to Council with recommendations and opportunities identified during the first two weeks of May. The interim draft report that was presented to Council on April 12 is now available on the website. This year's operating budget will require continuous monitoring and diligence by all managers to ensure compliance in every town department. We consider the capital budget to be an investment in our town's future by continuing to approve our community facilities, appearance, and health. Council will be provided timely budget updates to monitor progress throughout the year. Our goal is to stay within budget. The council's strategic priorities for 2016 continue from 2015 as we continue to strive to increase fiscal responsibility to ensure controlled spending and the best value for tax dollars. Continue to hold the line on tax rates for residents of Kirkland Lake. Continue our infrastructure renewal program to prioritize rehabilitation and repair of roads, pipes, and buildings, with one road total reconstruction project this year and several paving projects. Implement building development programs to continue selling new building lots and entice new development. Attain, retain, and expand business for Kirkland Lake by forming of the Economic Development Committee. Improve and enhance the use of social media to keep public more informed regarding town activities. To remove sewage costs from the property tax bills. To implement Stage Two of the Trail System. To revamp waste collection process. To improve recycling systems. To continue to meet accessibility standards in our town for residents. And to implement the Kirkland Lake sports tourism strategy. At the outset of the 2016 budget, as well as during the Director's Budget Presentation to Council, council members provided good insight and feedback of their budget expectations and consideration. I believe we have addressed most of these concerns despite challenging monetary pressures. Thanks to Council for their input and support. In summary, with this budget, we will make great strides toward fulfilling these goals. With vision, creative planning, commitment, and progressive implementation, we will meet and supersede these objectives as we continue to build a bright future for Kirkland Lake. I will now ask my fellow counselors for their comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kylie. Comments from Council? Well, Counselor Minow.
I'll go first, I guess. Well, nicely said, Counselor Kylie. I mean, you covered all the bases in terms of our revenue sources and also you've highlighted most of the expenses. And I think that story, or that nutshell story, actually explains why we're in this position right now. So, congratulations for that. The other thing I just want to touch on is obviously my comments on this is that we call it necessary evil, but we were faced with that 13% increase of MPAQ. So that was in itself an uphill battle for us to try to counteract that with whatever we could do. And obviously, 13% is a major thing to do. So I think the budget process did as best as they could. The staff is to be congratulated. They were certainly on the same wavelength as us and they're certainly thinking, like most taxpayers in this town, yes, they're trying to cut it back and they're trying to reduce. Having said that, I have to congratulate staff also. The operating budget is a very tricky exercise, but it's also a very sort of lean operating budget. So for that, I'm really happy that we're working towards keeping that as low as possible because obviously the consequence to that is the tax rate increase. But if we're at that point now, if I'm looking at historically speaking at our operating budget, we're at the point now where we have to make those tough decisions. And if that's the will of the people, then I guess we'll have to bear down, take the KPMG report for what it's worth, and also perhaps do our austerity measures that we've been sort of praised of having done, but we might have to dig deeper for that. So I'm certainly looking at that for this year in terms of setting some goals among ourselves and among the staff. If I could actually convey that message to them, I think that's what I would be trying to do on my behalf and hopefully on Council's behalf. The sad thing too is that we do have some revenue sources here that are not tapped in and some people are not too happy to speak about, but we do have an unorganized territory here that is very, very challenging for us in terms of our revenue source. We have mines that are not in the town limits of Kirkland Lake and we're not be able to tap that. We've got housing that's built in secluded areas and untaxable or in a tax break area. And if I'm taking Nettie Lake as an example, they have about $27 to $29 million of assessment there that's not assessed at that full tax rate that Kirkland Lake residents pay. People will argue that, but I mean, it's something we might want to look at as well. Also, you did mention a couple of times the sports tourism strategy, for which I am a very strong supporter of that. And I think the community has to think from the big picture. They'll have to actually support this and they'll have to implement it and give it all their best in terms of creating that economic spin-off that you were mentioning about, for instance, the Dudley Cup. Those are things that are going to sort of promote the town in itself and they're also going to make that business taxpayer a little bit more probably happy and more productive there. So we should be pushing that extremely hard. The other thing I want to mention, which you didn't mention, is the OMPF. You know, sometimes people think we pay the tax bill. Yes, we do. We pay a big chunk. But OMPF is responsible for about $7.2 million of that bill. And we've been sort of holding the line on that for the last couple of years. So for me, that is a source of income that we need to protect, fight for, defend, and take it to the politicians above us in terms of trying to answer the dilemma we have about too many residential taxpayers versus less business people. So I think we should also work on that. And the other one, you did mention the uncollectible taxes. That's been a nightmare since I've been on Council. There's usually an acceptable percentage range around 8%, and I don't know where we're standing at now. We have major people who have not paid and you and I are paying that bill. We have to chuck it onto the revenue side. We have to put more taxes just to compensate for people who are not paying their taxes. So my story today is that, listen, taxpayers, we're hearing you. We know what you want. We want it to. However, because of this complex financial picture here, we cannot just say, do some cuts at one end and then increase the revenues at the end. It's as simple as that. That's how you do your bank account, but that's not how we run a municipality of this size. And I hope that taxpayers are going to be responsive in that they're going to see that this exercise is good homework done. And it's also necessary that these measures or these tax rates have to be passed because that's how we survive in terms of small-town urban, or well, urban. We're not urban, but we're certainly rural, mini-urban area. So for me, I'm very happy that this has come to this point here in terms of the reality's been set. You've put it out on the line. I hope it's reported that way and I hope that people understand where we're coming from. So once again, congratulations, staff, and let's hope that this coming year is going to give us those anticipated revenues.
Thank you, Counselor Minow. Counselor Barker.
Just going to add to what Norm brought forward. It was one of the hardest budgets processes I've been a part of since I've been on Council. And it might seem like a small cut or a small tax break or not even a tax break, but if we were to do any more of a tax break to our tax ratio, we might put ourselves behind the eight ball further in future years with taxes. So it's important to balance short-term and long-term for the taxpayer and from a prudent perspective for the community to make sure we can have a viable and sustainable community. So a lot of thought was put into this process, a lot of effort, and I commend Nancy, all the administrators and staff for their help and their diligence in this matter. So thank you.
Counselor Kylie.
Yeah, one other comment. And I think Nancy, you've mentioned this in the past, really as far as discretionary spending, the town really only has about 27% of the budget that there is some discretion in. The fixed costs amount to 73% of the total budget. So it doesn't give us much wiggle room. And I think particularly this year, we did give the directors a challenge to come up with alternatives and some of them were very good. Some of them we didn't move ahead on yet. I think we have to digest the KPMG report and then take it from there because there's going to be some overlap from what they presented in their proposals. So again, I thank the directors for being very diligent and those are tough decisions and they certainly did a good job in input and food for thought for us down the road. So thanks again.
Yeah, I think as Council has mentioned, there isn't a heck of a lot of wiggle room in this budget. And I think as we go forth in saying what Counselor Minow said, I think we're going forth in 2017, I think we really have to look at the services that we provide our citizens and to get any impact on our budget. So we anxiously await the KPMG final report. We'll study it. We'll implement the ones that Council so desires. But I think there's a lot of serious discussion that will have to take place for the 2017 budget. And one good thing is that we're already discussing it and bringing up some points now. So I think we'll be very ready for that budget. And I certainly want to thank Counselor Kylie and Counselor Barker for the time they've spent sitting with staff and going through line by line to be satisfied that there's little or no waste or little or no wiggle room. And if there's nothing else, comment on that. We'll be bringing that back in the bylaw. Okay? Thank you. The Chief Administrative Officer, 2016, Nancy's going to briefly run over the quarterly financials.
We're just passing the budget and already the first quarter's gone by and so it's time for us to report on that. I'll do it very briefly, however, if there's any questions or comments or anything, we're happy to discuss those. Overall, we are under budget in all areas, all departments. A couple of things I'll bring to your attention. If you look at our recreation and cultural services, if you look at our childcare, it would appear that we're over budget $33,479. However, we are still awaiting ALP grant of $86,000 and a quality assurance grant of $18,000 for a total of another $104,000 in revenue coming into that account that's not there yet. The rest of the budget, every area is under budget and so we're pleased so far with that. In the last page, we're looking at the water budget. The one area there to point out to you is underwater works rate levy. These are the revenues that we bring in when we send out our water bills. We're a little under where we usually would be for that revenue. However, we do tend to use a lot more water in the summer than we do in the winter hours. So we expect that to even out after the second quarter or so. Are there any questions about the first quarter?
None identify. Counselor Minow.
Nancy, could you comment on the, I know we have different tax collection dates. We have three collections, right?
Tax collection dates? We send out the bills four times a year. We would have sent out the first two so far.
And can you comment on the status of that collection or do you have that?
I'm going to ask Jen to comment on that because she has the firsthand. Jen, can you come up? We do have a tax sale of a large property as well that will affect that collection.
We haven't received the April comparison report, but I think if I can remember the March comparison report, our collection is kind of on target as to where we were last year at that time. So we should be receiving the April comparison report for tax collection within the next week. It's just sick at this time.
We did send out the March one to you. So you do have that one, but we'll send it out again at the end of April.
So just if you're noticing in the budget, how come we don't have any revenues in there for taxes? Once we send out the final tax billing, then all revenues will appear. It's just the way that our accounting does it right now, it just sits in a suspense account. So it's not apparent in there.
So if we're on par with last year, does that mean we're going to end up with an uncollectible of about the same amount as last year?
Well, we'll be levying more dollars this year. So we should anticipate that we're going to collect more should everyone pay their taxes.
Yeah, that's the one I'm trying to get, is the uncollective ones.
Oh, so we're just in the middle of our audit process too right now. So wants to figure out where our uncollectibles sit for the end of the year. That's the meeting that we'll be having in the next couple of days. So coming maybe at the next meeting or the one after, Ross Pope will be here to discuss our final audit and then at that time we can talk about our uncollectible position for 2015, however.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Jen. And again, you know, the first quarter is always a difficult comparison because a lot of the revenues haven't come in, but I think as we get into the second and third quarter, it's much more informative and it represents the direction that we're heading. Okay, Nancy, Larder Lake Shared Services.
We were approached by the Town of Larder Lake asking if we would be willing to share some services and they were asking for an hour a week of chief building officer time, 2.5 of bylaw enforcement, and about two hours a week of fire chief slash fire prevention officers. We invited them to the town hall to have a discussion with them and all the parties were present. And actually, to save one hour per week of chief building official time would not really do it. I mean, it would probably take him half a day or a day to just review plans. So there's... So there's a lot more entailed in that. Right now, Larder Lake belongs to a large group and to Miskimin where they get together and all small municipalities, they hire a chief building official between them all and that person travels from, between the communities and satisfies that need. However, that person left to take another job and so that's why they're looking again. We feel it would be much more efficient for them to stay in that arrangement and we'd like to convey that to them. Our chief building official is certainly willing, you know, to go for the hour a week, but he also doesn't feel that he'd be able to accomplish what they need to. Even just a building project requires several, several visits and, and looking at plans and that. They do also have a by law enforcement officer and so it's very difficult for them to enforce any bylaws because they don't have the ability to ticket or, or do that. Our by law officer does have the time. We feel that he could go out there and help them enforce some bylaws. However, it's more than just giving a ticket. If that ticket's contested, then there's court time. Some days you could be in court for eight hours for the whole day until your, your case is actually heard. So we've met with them and explained that to them and, and they do have an understanding of that. The last one is a fire chief and fire prevention officers. Our chief feel that he could certainly go out there and, and do fire inspections that, you know, that would probably take a couple of hours per week, but to do more than that in terms of, you know, training staff and that kind of thing would be a lot more hours. And you could not fulfill that in the two hours per week that they were looking for. So what I would like to propose to them with council's agreement is that we would share our by law officer for the hours they requested and more would be billed at our rate as, and travel time as required. That we would share limited fire chief duties to do inspections only right now and he can go from there and see if there's anything else he could offer them. And that we do not share the CBO duties at this time that we recommend to them to stay in the group and, and try to do that because we think their needs might be more than we could, we could provide for them. Also, any of these services, we checked with our insurance company, would have to be provided under Larder Lake's liability insurance and we would have a contract for each of these services with them, which I've obtained different contracts from various municipalities who do share services to make sure that we include everything necessary. So I would like direction from council whether they agree, would agree with the recommendations that we do that sharing or whether they have some other ideas about possibly what we could do.
Councilor Morgan.
I've been a, a longtime advocate of, of sharing services, particularly along the Highway 66 corridor. You know, we tried to coordinate economic development many years ago. There was a lot of discussion around that time about sharing other services. I think this is totally a win-win and I'd like to see even more of it. I mean, as far as the logistics go, I think, you know, that's certainly a staff issue and I totally trust, you know, you need to decide where your people best fit. But as far as a, a philosophy, you know, I, I would like to see a lot more sharing between particularly the four municipalities from here to the Quebec border. I think we all share a lot of the same issues and, you know, if we could share equipment, if we could share other things, I mean, I, I certainly support that. But I mean, this here, no brainer for me. I think we should be, you know, this is a good starting point.
And that's what it was intended as a starting point and we'd see where we could go from there.
Councilor Barker.
I'm with Todd. I love the philosophy of being able to share and capitalize, just as long as it's not at a cost to the municipality, including quality of service. So if, if you're comfortable and feel that the quality of service being offered here in town will not be jeopardized, I fully support this.
And that's been considered when we all, all sat together and that we, we have to meet our, our own needs first and this is what we're able to do to start with and if we can do more that, that we'd go that way.
Councilor Roman.
I'm in favor of this, this as well, but my concern would be that, that when they're using our by law officer or fire inspector, it needs to be issue specific because there's certainly a liability that goes with taking on the responsibility of, of by law enforcement in a town just, just by omission if, if something isn't noticed that should have been or along that lines. So I, I think we, we have to be careful that when, when we do send our employees out there, that it's for a specific issue that, that Larder Lake's identified and they can address it while, while they're there. But they're not assuming responsibility for by law enforcement or fire inspection as a whole.
Yes, and, and we, we, we plan to address that through having an individual contract for each service and as well having their insurance liability given to us and that, that our employees would be covered when they're working there on specific issues.
Yeah, I, I too believe that it's important for us to, to work with our good neighbors to the east and in this case, Larder Lake. I, I, I think it's important that by, with sharing these services that we don't jeopardize our own here, here in Kirkland Lake. And I, I, I would suggest or recommend that any contractual agreements be made in such a way that should we want to pull out or should Larder Lake want to pull out, that it's, it's not a big, it's not a big effort. You know, I'd hate to see our by law officer out there ticketing in Larder and, and vehicles straddling the crosswalk here in front of the banks. So I think, and I'm confident that Nancy will work with the, with the Larder Lake and come up with some, with, with an agreement that's beneficial to both parties. And I, I, I think they should also understand that we're here to fill a gap for them and that they should continue to, as you suggested with the building inspector, but they should also continue to perhaps look at these other things that we're doing for them. But other than that, I'm certainly in favor of it as well. Councilor Kylie.
Does Larder Lake contribute to anything to the airport? Perhaps this would be a good time to bring that to their attention again. Maybe there's some way of working in that discussion that we get some compensation for the operation expenses at the airport. I know it's, they do, they get used out of it for sure.
For sure they do, Councilor Kylie.
They, they do, they do contribute to our family health team as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think.
Just food for thought.
Yeah, as, as Councilor Kylie mentioned, it may give us the ability to open up these discussions and because there's a big catchment area that use our airport and specifically for our ambulance and yet our community foots the entire bill. However, at, at times that's our argument to the province to hold our, our OMPF at, at par from previous years and, and looking at the communities in the north, we're one of the very few communities that never seen a decrease in their OMPF in the last two or three years. So, so somebody is listening, but certainly Councilor Kylie, I know exactly where you're coming from and I, I think it'll be a good, the screen doors opened as they would say. So it'll be a good thing for the future. Okay, I have a resolution here. It was moved by Councilor Morgan and seconded by Councilor Barker. The council approves the sharing services with Larder Lake for the following positions: by law officer and limited fire chief, as recommended in the chief administrative officer's report dated May the 2nd, 2016. All in favor? Thank you. Mark, you're going to come forward and, and do a presentation of the recycling. I, I just will mention upfront that the, the report did come to us late today. Certainly it's, it's not a tremendous issue, but we are here to listen, to pose any questions to Mark that are necessary, but that there may not be any decision made today on that, but it'll give us a good basis to get back to Mark and if we have any other questions. But Mark, go ahead, please.
Yeah, and apologize for the lateness of the report. It was a quick turnaround and there's other issues to be dealt with. But I did try and make it a concise report. It's just over a page and it's a follow-up to last week's discussion. So if we could have a bit further discussion today, look at some of the, the options, recommendations and I can clarify any other questions hopefully that you have. So we looked at, after the last meeting, just breaking down kind of three options. Was asked to look at the depot facility before or with operating capital and then with, once the loans paid off. So it was built in over a 10-year term and you can see the first, what it says 2015, that's currently what we're, we're paying for recycling and depot operations. So depot facility only with the, to build one on our own, the capital investment, the operating payments or, or the payments on the capital investment would come out of operating. And then the, the fee to bring approximately 500 tons to market and you're looking at 366,000. And then once you have the payment off after 10 years, your operating would go down to 278 now. This doesn't take into account inflationary costs at this point. It's just, but everything would go up relatively. The second one would be depot facility and collection. So that we're looking at capital investment for the building and the, and the collection vehicles. And again, that's over a 10-year period. That being removed would go down to 394 from 491. Again, inflationary, it's not in there. Curbside collection weekly, capital investment would be, in this situation would be a rear loader compactor. That's based over five years. 90,000 remains static with the amount of tonnage at this point, so that we're looking at 272 and after the payment of the equipment, 2, 225. So within these three options, we're looking, the, the second one, the depot and collection, you would have more of the truck and trailer system because then you'd have a depot to be able to store the material prior to taking it with the, without a depot, it's a compacting vehicle that stores the material within it, compacts it for maximum tonnage when it's taken to, to market. We do anticipate that the recycling will go up if we, if the decision is not to have the depot and that weekly would be required. There's a couple of clarification pieces I also wanted to bring up. One was around glass that we would, we would keep glass out of the, the mixed recyclables because it does contaminate it and you have to pay more when you drop it off at the, the recycling or sorting centers. So that we keep that out, having a, a place at the landfill where people can bring it as well as we'll have many depots around where people can bring the glass jars. It's not a, a huge product. A lot of glass, the beer and liquor store have producer, their own producer return programs. So it's just, yeah, there's, you're seeing the plastics having more of a, there's more of those products than glass coming out. Cardboard, so the cardboard ban means that it's not, would not be placed in the garbage. So the commercial or the residential section would not be placing the OCC, which is the, the corrugated cardboard, the thicker stuff in the garbage. Pizza boxes that are contaminated with food, that's considered garbage. This is more of the shipping boxes and whatnot and that would all go through promotion education on what products for OCC which should not be accepted. But definitely they would be picked up at recycling time. So when I, we looked at just breaking down some options, the, the depot only, the mis, misbelieve run would be an option that was brought up by counselor. We did look at over the, the long period and I haven't provided the full budgetary numbers other than just the breakdown, but looking at what was put forward, we looked at the wages, the vacation stats, sick time, overtime, we didn't put any overtime, there's staff benefits, stationary supplies, uniform, boots, telephone. It's all the stuff that we normally have in a budget. Then we go into the, the maintenance of the equipment that we'd have to budget for parts and services, fuel, mechanics wages. We looked at the building itself, the, the maintenance, the electrical, the gas and power, the insurance, repairs and services and maintenance that we kind of estimated through looking at a budget to operate it and then included the, the payment over the 10 years and then remove the payment. So it did come down. We did the same thing for just recycling, curbside recycling. Again, through all the, the series of accounts that we normally do our budgets and after the, the payments are out, the, it's showing us that the curbside collection is coming in lower still than the, the building. I can go over numbers with you after or, or provide them to all council as well. That being said, having a building that may not be usable after bill 151 is, could be a problem and within the 10 years that we're paying for this thing, this could be become unnecessary. And again, it's just another capital asset that's always on the books and depreciating and requiring maintenance and utility costs ongoing. Option two, the depot and collection, and that's where, you know, we'd have to build the facility. We use the, the smaller type of equipment, the truck and trailer for collection and that's only because we have a place to store the material. So there was that option, those figures were here in the chart as well. And then the option three, curbside collection only, the compaction vehicle, rear loading, mixed recyclables. Now it could be misbelieve ran or contracted out. I'll talk about that in a minute. You know, continue bi-weekly with the option to increase weekly collections to accommodate larger volumes depending on what we're seeing with the implementation of the garbage cart program. And then eliminate town-funded depot. So I, I worded as the town-funded depot because currently TNR is under contract to provide curbside collection and, and we're paying for him to provide a depot to the town. Eliminating, elimination of that, TNR does have a certificate of approval for waste recycling site on that property. So there's nothing stopping him then to, at future date complying with orders he has and fixing his building that he could offer a recycling depot as a private company. The town wouldn't be paying for it, so then it would become his way to manage his business, fee for service and whatnot. Having something locally would reduce our transportation costs and if he's looking to increase his business in sorting, that could be a win-win, but not being town-funded or whatnot, all property standards and clean yards and everything would go along with it to require a cleaner operation. So talking about municipal run or contracted, so I did provide the numbers here. These were just municipal with, we know that the depot with Mr., with the current contractor is an ongoing issue and even, you know, to the past weekend. He is not required to accept commercial. Our only, we're only paying him to have a residential recycling depot. Problems he's facing is all commercial are just dropping all their stuff off, not breaking it up. Now that's on him really for not restricting it, but at the end of the day, he's taking everything away eventually and he's actually paying to drop off commercial stuff where they should be paying him to drop, to take it. So he's got a bit of a, an area of opportunity that he could clean up for himself there. that he could clean up for himself there. So, looking at his, as far as the garbage collection, TNR's always picked up whatnot, there hasn't been really an issue with that, there's been problems with the liquid waste, but we believe we're going to address that with the cart system and eliminate that issue. I think with the Bill 151, there's opportunity to look at further extension of contract with him for collection only, for recyclables over the, over the short term, to see the full impact. He'd be willing to look at, at that, to continue bi-weekly and then negotiate otherwise, if we need to go weekly. So, there is that opportunity with him, he does recognize that the collection vehicles need to be presentable, fully labeled what they're for, and it's not garbage, it's collection of recyclables, that he'd be willing to implement if, if we can come up to a reasonable contract extension with him. Barring that, we do have the numbers for municipal run, the lease and rates are high over the, if you lease them for one year, the collection vehicles, they come down a bit after, for three, but it's nowhere near as beneficial as buying one out. I think we need to be careful in investing in rolling stock too at this point, for that. So what I would present and for your consideration would be to take option three, allow me to work out the best, most cost-efficient way to do it over the short period, till we see the full impact, and report annually, or well, basically quarterly with the budget and how things are going, and see what the implications are for the following year. Eliminate the depot, phased in with, with the garbage and recycling, and again, start it bi-weekly. So, if there's questions, I'll take questions. The only thing I wanted to mention with promotion education, we will be starting up with the garbage and the bins, getting that going, we have a booth at the Home and Trade Show that's coming up, and if I had some direction from council, it'd be easier to get some of the promotion education components going around that as well.
Councillor Kylie.
Yes, Mark, have we received any indication from the contractor that they can meet the requirements for the garbage pickup?
Yeah, so we've been working with him as far as the bonding issues that's been dealt with. The, the equipment, he's just returned from Toronto, where he has the two vehicles lined up for purchase. He's just doing some final, I guess, his due diligence on those, those pieces of equipment. So, it sounds like he shouldn't have any problem meeting the requirements of the garbage contract.
Okay. Just to clarify, on option three, if we had our own compact, compactor truck, is that, once his truck is filled, the contents are left in it, and do we have to deliver that to Timmins ourselves?
Yeah, so we would have to bring it to the sorting facility, so there's one in Timmins, and North Bay, Sudbury, it all depends what market and what the best value is, based on distance and, and pricing. And again, if, if we did town run it, run it ourselves, and a private contractor opened up a sorting facility here, we would eliminate the travel costs associated with in time, and be able to work something out with that, that business in town.
Okay. Just one other clarification on the corrugated cardboard, if, tell me if I'm correct in my understanding from the previous meeting, if the resident cut up corrugated cardboard, and it fits into the blue box, we will pick it up?
Yes.
Or is that not right?
No, that's correct, we will pick it up in the blue box, we'll also pick it up the, if, you know, if it's put in a reasonable size and bound and set beside the recycling bin. It just can't be left with debris of styrofoam, pieces of wood within it, staples, and, and in large volumes of fridges or big TVs and whatnot, it should be broken down, and so that it can be picked up and recycled.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Morgan.
Thanks, Mark, this is, this goes a long way to clarifying some of the questions we had last, last meeting. Just, for my own preference, I mean, I'm still leaning towards starting with the bi-weekly and then gradually ramping it up, but again, it's a function of what the actual cost is going to be at the end of the day. I mean, until we know, we don't know. One question I have about your, your chart here, the $90,000, you know, cost to market. Now, my understanding was that if it's a curbside, and we're using a compaction vehicle, the material stays in the vehicle and it goes. But if we're using a depot system, that material has to be re-handled and then shipped, so is this just the cost of the actual movement, and the cost of rehandling is separate, or will you show us that in those additional numbers you're going to provide to us?
Yeah, it should show it a little bit further, broken down within these numbers. We're looking at a depot where we're storing it, then you're looking at the transportation of larger volumes in a, in a transport trailer, where, but it's not really compacted either. So, it was a bit of a give and take, because you're, you're sending out more volume per trip, rather than the short trips with the two, two to five tonnes in a compaction vehicle, and more, probably 10, 10 to 12 in a trailer.
That's, that's all that really gets shipped in a, in a truck, is just a few times like that?
Yeah, because it's not.
It's not compacted that much.
Yeah, the garbage truck, depending on the size of it, you know, is three, three to five tonnes of compacted material, and then a transport trailer, van style, it's not really a compaction thing, so, but you're just putting in as much as you can, and pushing it down and tarping it, so, but it's a lot bigger.
Okay, thanks. So. Councillor Roman.
I'm still in favor of a depot system, I can be convinced otherwise if, if the costing shows it, so I'd appreciate, I'll take you up on your offer to, to get a breakdown of these numbers, because I, I, I don't know, I still find it hard to, to believe that it costs more to run a depot than it does to do weekly curbside pickup. I'm not sure what's, like, you listed out what's involved in that, 188,000, but I just, I can't get my head around it, costing 188,000 to run a depot, so.
Yeah, I'll provide the breakdown.
Councillor Shamyard.
Just to make sure, Mark, so what do the commercial people do with their recycling?
So, at this point with their recycling, that, that's up to them, the, again, we don't provide, we're not mandated to provide recycling for commercial. We, we're funded based on providing recycling to residential properties. As far as the, the commercial with the cardboard ban, there's an out-of-town company now that comes in and takes it, and then, as far as the recyclables, they would have to look at either storing or, or bringing them to a facility of their own. If there were something within town that would deal with that, again, it is a business opportunity and potential job creation for the town.
So, what happened if the, that company decides, I'm not going in town, there's not enough cardboard? Like, they're stuck with that cardboard? We're not taking it? Nobody wants it?
Well, recyclables outside of town will take it.
I'm talking about cardboard only?
Yes.
So you're sure they'll come here and pick it up?
They, they currently do it at other locations in town.
Councillor Mino.
Mark, the, you said you would go for a year, under what option again? I didn't get it, is it?
With, I think, well, I would look at the best dollar value, right? Whether we have to run it ourselves, or look at an extension, contract extension with the current collection.
So there's no capital purchase in the 220 there for the year?
No, they wouldn't, so this is only if we town run, there'd be a capital purchase from us if we, if we run it ourselves.
Yeah.
There would just be a contracted amount, and no capital outlay if we get a contract extension.
Is there, is there a revenue side to this? Like, what do we, do we get a revenue?
There's not a lot of revenues in recycling.
Yeah.
The product that, that does bring money is the OCC, so, but at this point, it's gone away from small sorting facilities to pay to drop this stuff off, to large sorting facilities, they do all the work, and then it becomes their product to, to sell. So, when this recycling initiative started, and the current contractor was, was sorting and bailing, he, he would wait to what the market was on OCC, aluminum plastics, and ship out tractor-trailer loads, but those products don't yield very much revenue with the volumes that are really within Kirkland Lake, it takes too long to generate that amount of plastics and aluminum, but the cardboard is still viable.
So when we, so if we were to bring this, you said we bring that to market, that means we make a physical trip? We bring these recyclables?
Yeah.
Somewhere else, we don't get nothing for that?
No, we have to pay to get rid of it.
Yeah, that's what I mean, there's no, they're not buying it by the pound, or?
No.
Okay. So, because I didn't see revenues lying here, I was wondering if there was any.
If, you know, running it ourselves, if we wanted to, to get into separation and bailing, then we'd have more capital outlay for a baler, and additional staffing to do the sorting and packaging. In the end, with what we would receive for it, based on the volumes in Kirkland Lake, it wouldn't be a, a good revenue generator on an annual basis to pay what it costs us to, in labor and equipment to, to do it.
Councillor Kylie.
Yes, Mark, this is more of a comment to do with garbage itself. On multi-residential, we're raising the tax rate by 6.61%, and basically, to me, we're cutting the service to these property owners, and wanting them to pay, if they want extra containers, $650 per container. I know this is, we're on recycling, but I really hope that we can relook at that and come up with some more of a reasonable figure, because it's a, that'd be pretty hard to swallow with somebody having to dish out that kind of money if you had seven or eight units.
Again, the thinking was that it was, they were income properties over so many that was classified by impact as multi-res. Looking at the, the price that we'd set on it, it covered the, the cost of the cart and replacement over time, the amount of bags that would be in there per week, over 52 weeks, that would be received at the landfill, kind of under what our bag rate, and then adding in a transportation component for that, making it, that's what we came out with, making it too, putting the price tag too low on these would just encourage people to have more garbage cans and less recycling. So we had to come up with something that would discourage people from just renting extra garbage cans, and just contributing more garbage, and the initiative to get, get to the recycling, to lengthen the life, life of the landfill as well as going green, as much as we can.
Well, we are talking recycling here today, so I'll bring that up at another time, but I don't totally agree.
Okay.
Just a further comment on Councillor Kylie's, we are forming a committee.
Yes.
To look at what is reasonable. I, I know I talked with the mayor up to Misscaming Shores, and they didn't change the service for anyone when they changed over. So for instance, if they had a residential properties that had five units, they got five carts. If they had a multi-residential property that had more, say, eight units, they got eight carts. In areas where there was difficulty to pick up with the carts, the, the municipality put in, I believe they were called two-and-a-half-yard storage, and, and these are being picked up. So I think what Kylie's, Councillor Kylie's saying is that, you know, we're increasing the taxes, but we're reducing the service that we gave them prior. I think our whole purpose was to make the clown, the town cleaner, and get rid of the bags, and it, it really isn't to penalize someone with five units. I, I agree with the thinking, but, and I'm hoping that this committee will come up with, if we have a five unit, they get five carts. But again, we're not in, in, in garbage. But with regards to the recycling, hypothetically, if we went with this truck and small trailer, could we store any of that recycling at our, do we have a depot out at the landfill that we could use, or, I'm, I'm just thinking for costs, just throwing that out there.
There is a building out there, it's not very big, that you're, you're starting to handle it more than once because of that. And anywhere else you would have it, you would require a certificate of approval, because now you're creating really a depot, a transfer station.
Yeah, and, and with regards to the education on the recycling, and if there is no decision tonight, is it possible to still have that education, to show examples of what we'll, what we'll take on recycling, to give examples of how a, a box should properly be cut up and, and packaged, and not just thrown out there with a bunch of other stuff in it?
Yeah, there's definitely things we can do around promotion education without knowing exactly how the system's going to roll out, which we'll, we'll do, and then residents will, will get the final call when that decision's made by council. So we will promote recycling with the, the garbage, they won't know how it's going to be implemented yet.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So did we want to defer a decision for tonight? Like, do you have enough information from us to still have your educational point? And, and I know there's a, a time limit here, that, because you have to get going, but from what I'm hearing from you is that, you know, you're going to look at it as a, filling the gap until Bill 151 is approved, so we can really see how that'll affect the municipalities going forward. And you're asking that we leave it with staff, with you, to come up with the most economical, something that meets our needs for the next year type thing, until 151 is passed.
Yeah, that's correct, that's basically my recommendation, and what I'm, what I'm looking for.
Does council feel comfortable to give that recommendation tonight? Or would you rather mull over the, I know Councillor Roman would like to see some figures, and Councillor Morgan would like to see some figures on the calculations, that, the more in-depth calculations. But can we give the Director of Physical Services any type of direction to proceed with this? Well, you know what, I have a resolution, why don't we read it, and we'll, we'll, we'll see how the motion, yeah. With move by Councillor Barker and seconded by Councillor Morgan, that council approves option three of the recycling memo dated May 3, 2016, as presented by the Direction, Director of Physical Services. All in favor?
Can I just make a recommendation? Can I, can we defer that resolution until next council, after we get the numbers and be able to make a, a sound decision on that?
So, Adam Clark? So, Adam Clark, can we, if we defer this, i- if we turn this down, can we bring back the same resolution again, once we have more information? Or once it's defeated, then it's, it's gone into the eye cloud, right?
Sorry, you're better off to defer it.
So are we better to defer it then? Would everybody feel more comfortable? So I'll read. Okay, okay, thank you, and thank you, Mark. And we, we certainly realize just how busy you are with all the projects going on, certainly nothing that it came in late, but it's just difficult to make a decision. Thank you.
Certainly, please. Just to, just to mention that as far as the committee, we will be posting for anybody interested for the volunteer committee. It's, we're going to add on to a current committee of property standards. It's not used very much, but including waste and recycling within that committee. I think it'll go a long way towards starting out with promotion and education and looking at the programs, and then down the road when there are property standards issues related, it could be related to garbage or clean yards or whatnot, that this committee would be well-versed in the program. So it'll, are we going to post this in the, in the newspaper on Friday, as well as social media, town website, looking for members? Thank you.
So, Mark, just, oh, sorry, just further to that, if I could ask you a question, Property Standards Committee, is that a, is that the planning?
No, it's a separate committee. It doesn't, it hasn't met because it only deals with appeals, if people are charged and they're appealing it. But we can look at the, the membership of, of the meeting again.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I sort of got a nod from everybody that, that they would feel the most comfortable. And, you know, the last thing we want to do is, is make a, a decision like this under the gun, I guess, or rushed. So thank you for being so patient on that. Okay, okay, I have reading of some bylaws. "Was moved by Counselor Morgan, seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw 16-036 being a bylaw to set the 2016 tax ratios be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. All in favor?" Thank you. "Was moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Morgan, that bylaw 16-037 being a bylaw to strike the 216 tax rates be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. All in favor?" Thank you. Notices of motion. Confirmation bylaw. "It was moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw 16-039 being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held May 3, 2016 be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. All in favor?" Thank you. Counselors' reports. Counselor Barker.
I'll keep this brief. First thing I want to do is just comment on the new heating system at the museum, it's working fantabulous, like, it's working incredible. It's a big change, our artifacts are a little safer now with this new system. So hats off to the town for the decision and the, the great work there. Still on the museum aspect of things, I forgot to mention last meeting about the Beatlemania event that was hosted at the museum by the auxiliary. Pierce Hemmingson came up to do, present the biography on Beatlemania and its connection to Kirkland Lake, actually Virginia Town, and very well-received, great quality presenter. He even had stuff from the, I think it was the British Embassy or the consulate from Toronto as giveaways for the program, so it was great quality, and he's looking to come back, really love the community, so I think we made more friends from down south coming back again, so there's that. Last thing, had a bear encounter a couple days ago, so I just want to remind the public that bears are back. Please follow the Bear Wise protocols to help keep a safer community. And reporting, if you call the Bear Wise line, they're open 24/7, what they do is use that statistics to kind of mark which bears, if they've been collared, if they've been tagged, nuisance, and they're able to collect and use the information more pertinently, dealing with the specific bear issue in a, in a specific neighborhood. So please report and go from there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Additional information, just for additional information, we, there is some reading material, National Wildlife Community Preparedness Day, May 7, 2016. "It was moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Barker, that council adjourn its regular meeting of May 3, 2016. All in favor?" Thank you.